Counselor Thompson. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, November 5th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Would you please, I call the meeting to order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. We have a roll call, please. Before you do that, Doc, Counselor McGee and Counselor Newton will be on Zoom for the first part of the meeting.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Newton? Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Van Dremelin?
Present.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Thank you very much. Next, adoption of the consent calendar. Counselors, would you like to do anything with that?
Move to adopt. The consent calendar is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Item four on your agenda is the presentations and ceremonies. The first presentation is Republic Services 2025 Annual Report, Julie Jackson presenting, and pages 12 through 18 in your packet. IT, try it.
Now? Yep. You can, I know you can hear that. Good evening. I appreciate your time here tonight, and I don't think I'll take very much of it, but I am here to talk to you about the refuse rate index that we come in with every year about this time. I also wanted to sort of give you an update on what we've been doing over the last year, in addition to the landfill issue. The thing that I think is probably most important to the cities of Albany is the implementation of the RMA, the Recycling Modernization Act. We are excited about that. We've been talking about it, as you know, for the last four years, and so now it has come to fruition. We implemented Phase One, along with the DEQ and the Circular Action Alliance in July, on July 1st. And really, what that means for citizens of Albany is just that there are some more materials that can go in the recycling cart. That's Phase One. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. There's a lot of reporting. There's a lot of technical stuff that happens with our reporting and at the DEQ level, but for citizens, really, all they need to know is that there are some additional materials that go in the cart, and I'll kind of go over what those are. In first quarter, right now, they're telling us first quarter 2027, Phase Two will happen in the Willamette Valley, and what that means is that we will switch our depots over to what are called ProDepos, Producer Responsibility Organization depots, and those depots will take additional materials that are hard-to-recycle items, like plastic films, styrofoam, a funny thing, the, I don't even know what we call these. They're the six-pack lids, you know, they're, that kind of come on, on top of cans and hold them together. And then lids for things like yogurt tubs and cottage cheese cartons. Those are a completely separate thing. They have to be sourced separated, and those kinds of things will be accepted at the depot in probably Q1 2027. So we've got a little ways to go, but it will take some time to get those depots enlarged and reconfigured so that they can handle some other materials. Another thing that may happen at those depots at that time is appliances, and that's something we hear a lot from our customers. They're always looking for places to get rid of appliances, and so we hope that that becomes a convenient place for them to do that as well. The other thing I wanted to highlight for you is that we made contributions of more than $60,000 in cash and in-kind donations in Albany and Lynn County in the past year, with some new things coming online. Republic Services is the sponsor of the Operation Christmas Tree tree this year, and we're really excited about doing something joyful in the community this year, so that will be a lot of fun. We did partner with the community, with the city billing department and with the Community Services Consortium to offer that 20% discount for low-income customers who qualify for energy assistance and for the city water discounts. Just to kind of remind you, and for those of you who are new and haven't heard this before, we don't really have the bandwidth or the ability to vet customers and decide if they're low-income or if they qualify or not, but because the city uses the consortium to do that vetting through the Low-Income Energy Assistance Program, we just use the same list of people, and those people are then eligible for that discount as well. So I think that, we've been doing that, it's either two or three years now, and it's working out well. We've kind of got a system with our billing department and the assistance of the city to get that list of folks. So, if we want, if we talk about the refuse rate index, if you look at the second page, which I think is page 13 in your packet, that is the calculation sheet that we use to determine what a rate adjustment would be for the coming year. And 65% of the adjustment is based on CPI, straight CPI. 10% is based on fuel cost, and then 25% is based on disposal cost. So what we did was, we took CPI, we sort of, this, we did this in 2013 with all the cities, and we looked at what are the actual costs of our industry and tried to come up with an index that would work for our industry, and that would allow us to come in for smaller adjustments, rather than coming in every two to three years for a nine or a 7% adjustment. This year, the adjustment is 2.4%. 1.4% of that is CPI. There is no adjustment for fuel this year because fuel cost was flat year over year, and so there's no addition for that. And then there's a 1% increase for disposal cost at Coffin Butte landfill. So that's the 2.4%. And that amounts to, on a 20-gallon cart, it amounts to 60 cents per month, 68 cents on a 32, 85 cents on a 64, a dollar two on a 90-gallon cart, and then it's 54 cents on that 32-gallon cart with the low-income discount. So I'll just pause there and ask if you have any questions on that part.
Thank you. So, I have a couple of questions. Are people recycling more lately?
Well, I, I think it's kind of a slow roll with RMA. You know, we've sort of been talking about this great thing coming for a long time, but we sent out information, we're going to be sending out that same information in July, or in July, in the end of December and the first part of January again, but I think it's going to take a little while for people to get to that point, to know that there are some new things that can go in.
But in general, over the last few years?
No.
People are not recycling more?
No, sadly. I wish I could tell you that they are. What I can tell you is they're making more trash per capita than ever before, and that includes Lynn County, Benton County, almost every county in the state. So I think that's the really encouraging part of the Recycling Modernization Act, is that it's really time to do something. And what I noticed way back in 2018, when we were talking about the China Sort Initiative, and there were a lot of big things happening, is it was big enough that people were listening. They kind of, you know, people sort of think they know how to do it, and they kind of stopped and took pause at that point and were listening, and we did see some changes then. We saw some contamination cleanup at that point. I think the same thing is going to happen now, is in that people are going to be listening because they know that there are some changes. If you look at page, I think it's 18, in your packet, it looks like this. It's just a recycling guide, and we use this because it does look different. This is the guide that has been created for the entire state. These are the graphics. This is, Recyclon is the name that the Recycling Modernization Act has chosen to use for their marketing campaign. And the great thing about it is that all of Oregon will have the same list of materials now. Portland has a few more materials, but nobody counts that. The rest of us and Portland all have the same list of materials. And so when people come from another city, they're not going to be confused about what gets recycled here, or if they've been working with another company, or it's been going to another facility for sorting. All of those things are equalized now, and I think that's probably one of the biggest things that will happen. If you just look at this, I'll just give you kind of a brief rundown. In plastics, I think the big item is that you can put bigger items in, so you can put up to a five-gallon bucket in the recycling now. That was too big in the past to be accepted. We still have a few concerns about those jamming in the truck, but we will work through those because that's a material that's now accepted. The other one that I think is going to just blow your mind, and it's just little, but it's that you can leave caps and lids on plastic bottles and jars now. And some of you have heard me for 20 years talk about taking those lids off, but the technology has changed. Bottles and jars are going through a process where that neck is cut off anyway, so go ahead and leave those on. The benefit of doing that is that if there's a little bit of liquid left, even if you rinse them out in a container, it keeps that liquid from getting on the paper and contaminating the paper. So I think that's kind of a big change in a little form. If you look at metals, this is the one that I think is going to move the needle, because we measure recycling by weight, and you can now put up to 10 pounds of scrap metal in the cart. That's a really big deal, and it should be 10 pounds or under and not bigger than 18 inches in diameter. And that's, so that's a pretty big item. I'll give you an example. I was cleaning out some things, and I had some old metal brackets that go in my closet and hold a pole, and I, typically I keep a box and I take it down to Berchem's Metal, but suddenly realized I could just throw them in my recycling cart, and that was probably, probably five pounds worth of metal by the time I got done. So, plastic is very, very light. It's hard to move the needle when you measure by weight, but metal will make a difference. Pizza boxes, if you look down at cardboard, you know, pizza boxes are always a question for everybody, but now we're saying, if they aren't too contaminated, put them in. If the bottom's really greasy, rip it off and throw the top in, but we like those. And then you'll see that milk cartons, those traditional gable-top milk cartons are included. That's really a new one. The Carton Council, who makes those containers, is really good at lobbying for that. So those materials got in. I will tell you, I open those up all the way and rinse them out, and let them dry a little because those get moldy and yucky in your cart really fast. And then aseptic boxes, like the one that says broth on it. There's also been some confusion about things like egg cartons, but those are all great things to go in. One of the things that I, I'm glad they took off of here, we kept having on our list phone books, and I finally said, why do we have, who uses a phone book anymore? Nobody has a phone book? Take it off the list. It's too confusing. What I also want you to really note is that, that list down below that says no. So those are the really most problematic forms of contamination, I think. We don't accept anything in bags at all. So if you've put your recyclables in a plastic bag, we're going to throw those away, because people have to sort through this material. Batteries are a fire risk, so we don't want those in the cart. Food, don't go in, plastic bags. And then the things that we call tanglers, hoses, cords, wires, coat hangers, all of those things, because all of this material gets sorted at a really highly mechanized facility, and those things tangle in the machinery, and it really does cause those machine, the facility to have to shut down and climb in the machinery and untangle. So those are the major differences, and like I said, with that metal, I think we're going to see a difference.
So, thank you for that information about new things that could be recycled in the future. My next question, then, would be, do you anticipate in the coming years that people will be recycling more?
I do.
You do?
Yeah, I really do. I think this is our opportunity with people listening and with making some changes, to get people to become a little bit more aware of what goes in and to get them to put more in. Yeah.
That's great.
And, and that's what the state hopes to.
I have one more question, sir. So with that increase in recyclable materials being recycled in the near future, I, would, would I be safe to assume that that would then make less items that need to go to a landfill?
Absolutely.
Great. So then, why are we paying more for the Coffin Butte disposal rate?
Well, there has been significant cost at Coffin Butte. Without getting too much into the whole expansion thing, we had hoped to move into what would be the expansion area three years ago. That got delayed and postponed, and so we had to move into a cell in what we call the quarry. We had to move Knife River out and move into that cell, and it was very expensive to develop that cell. So Coffin Butte has had significant costs. The other thing is that for much of the operating cost at a landfill, one ton or a million tons requires kind of the same footprint and the same operations. With that said, the way that you save money and don't pay more at the landfill is by reducing your waste. And so I guess I should have started this recycling conversation with that, to say, the real goal is waste reduction. And so, for example, if I can, if I have a total of, let's say, 50 gallons between waste and recycling, and right now I have to have a 64-gallon cart because 40 of those gallons are trash and 10 gallons are recycling. If I can move 10 more gallons into the recycling out of the garbage can, I can move down to a 32-gallon cart, which I will pay significantly less per month for. So I think it really puts the onus on the customer to say, if I, if I want to recycle more, and if I want to do a good job at this, I probably can have a smaller cart. My husband and I just had this conversation today about, why do we have this giant cart? We don't need it. So.
So your projection is that people will be recycling more, will be producing less waste, but we're raising rates?
Well, so this, this is an index rate, and we come in and we do an index rate to keep up with the cost of living. So, for example, those rates pay our workers who get a raise at Coffin Butte, at, or the people who drive the truck, or people like me. Everybody likes to get paid a little bit more all the time. So we have increased costs, and that's what the, the index rate pays for. We don't really come in and say, you know, we have this much more cost at Coffin Butte landfill. We know we do. We know we, we have a higher rate at Coffin Butte. But one of the other things, and I think it's really important to point out, is that I think our industry and the recycling industry made a really big mistake maybe 30 years ago by saying, and recycling is free. We used to say that to our customers when they called to ask for service. We'd say, this is how much it is for your garbage, and you get recycling free with that. The truth is, recycling isn't free. Recycling has never been free, ever, and recycling costs more than landfilling, honestly. We think it's the right thing to do. We think the communities feel like it was the right thing to do. But recycling, it costs just as much to transport and pick up recycling, but it gets handled more, truthfully, than material at a landfill. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Sure.
Any other Counselor have a comment?
Yeah, my answer's been raised.
Okay, I didn't see one, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So, as someone who is a, I would say a super recycler, super reuser, like cut off my old clothes, use them to scrub my house, compost everything, and you know, compost my garden, I'm happy to hear that you think that recycling will be increasing. Something that I am curious is if, you know, especially with these new regulations and rules, would Republic be open to maybe doing like a class, like it could be like an online thing? No one has to lead it, but it's like an online module, and maybe residents could take this, take this module, pass the recycling test or whatever, and get like a one-time discount?
I, I don't know about the discount part. I will say that about, I'm going to say 13 years ago, I started a program called the Master Recycler Class for Lynn and Benton County, and we offered that up until COVID, and then it kind of fizzled during COVID. We tried to do it online, and we just didn't generate a lot of interest. We partnered with Oregon State, and they backed out of it. I would like nothing more than to see master recyclers come back, because what I can tell you is, this stuff is fascinating. And if that's interesting to you, you will eat it up. It runs much like a master recycler or gardener program, where you go and you, you get all of this industry knowledge, and then you give volunteer hours. So we paid for the cost of the class, and then we didn't charge people. In other counties, they charge, the county runs it and they charge people to take it, but we decided we wanted people to be able to come for free. So, so yeah, that could certainly happen if, if there's a desire for it, to bring the master recycler program back and, and yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, and maybe there's some way we could like incentivize people and, and then also, I wanted to quickly follow up and see, so where, China not really accepting things and with the changes, where is our recycling going?
Oh, a great question.
Is it being reused?
So, part of the RMA requires what they're calling, I can't remember the first word, but they, responsible rims, responsible end markets. And so the end markets where that material goes, there's, there's kind of a chain of command that happens all the long way with the Recycling Modernization Act, so that when we pick up material, we report where we, we took it for sorting, and that facility reports what they sorted and where it went, and there's this, there's this sort of chain that follows it to its endpoint, whether it's a facility where that material is re-ground and sold for new plastic bottles, for example, or whether it's a metal smelting facility where it's melted down and made into some new product. So there's, there's greater oversight, I think, and I think what you're talking about is, you know, we sort of all discovered that our plastics were going to Asian markets where they were being dumped along riverbanks, and we were horrified by that. So we do not, I can guarantee you that Republic doesn't send any material overseas in its, in the state that you give it to us, too. We do have some centers around the country called polymer centers, where we, we clean and flake or pelletize plastics, and we create material that could be shipped to a manufacturer who wants that particular material in an Asian market, but otherwise, we're not sending materials overseas. And that really is the goal of RMA, too, is to keep materials domestic and keep them within the United States. So I think as a state and as a company, we're working really hard on that.
So, so one of the things I'd like to talk about is social education, getting it in the schools, getting it in the hands of kids, like this flyer here. So if a mayor contest starts in January, I'll be taking these flyers with me to the classrooms.
Let me know. I'll provide them for you.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that. And I do like the fact that we actually reduced our costs by recycling more.
Yeah.
So our recycle bin is full, especially when we got this hanging on the front of the refrigerator, and so we went down to the smaller bin. Now we have one or two bags in a two-week period, and it's good to go, so.
And the other thing I can tell you is that we are moving toward putting AI cameras in trucks so that we can see what's coming out of carts, which is, we've had cameras in there, but these AI cameras will be programmed probably initially to look for a plastic bag full of things in your recycle cart. If you do that, you may in the future get a note from us that says, hey, we couldn't pick up your recycling today because it was contaminated. Here's the, here's a picture of what we saw coming out of your cart. So we're, we're working really hard. Part of RMA requires some warnings and some things before anybody would be fined for that, but we're working really hard to get that material cleaned up, and that does help keep the cost of recycling down as well.
Thank you. Counselor McGee, do you have anything?
I do not. I do not.
Counselors? Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
Next presentation is, item B is presentation of the first quarter financial report by Jean, oh Jen, Jen Ambule. Did I say that right? And apparently Deputy City Manager. Oh, Jean.
You're actually getting a whole group.
And, and Director Gina Jaeger.
You're actually getting a tag team of Gina and I, but Jen was listed on here. Jen actually did a huge, do you want to give her kudos? She did a huge lift on pulling together the numbers for this report. So I'm sorry, I'm also stalling so I can pull up the PowerPoint for you. There we go. Okay. So yes, as I was saying, Jen did a wonderful job. She pulled all of the numbers for you for this report, and this is really something we're very excited and proud of. Between the Finance Department and the City Manager's Office, we've been talking about for a while, wanting to do more initiatives that could provide greater transparency and education, both to you and to the public in regards to how the city's financials work. So this is the first of what we hope will be an ongoing quarterly financial update to council. And before I turn it over to Gina to talk about the financial side of it, I wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the format and how we approach this. One of the things that we really wanted to do is we, I've had a lot of experience with different financial reports. Gina's seen a number of financial reports and worked on financial reports before. What you tend to see from departments, or excuse me, cities, is something that is very difficult to understand. It's a long list of numbers without context. So one of the major goals that we wanted out of this was to make sure that we created something for you that not only provided an overview, but told a story. That was something that could be shared online, could be shared with your constituents, to really help them understand how the money is moving, but also why and what it's doing. So this was a very intentional approach to try to provide something that you could share with your constituents, and it will be shared online as well following this meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gina to talk about our first slide.
So the very first thing you may notice on that graph is that our revenues look like they are crazy this biennium compared to the last biennium. It looks really funky. We thought so. We went in, did some research on it. So as you may know, that we had some shorting, some staffage shortages in the last biennium. So the first, this represents the first quarter. So in governmental finance, here in the state of Oregon, we run on a July 1st to June 30th year. We refer to these months as periods. So in periods 1, 2, 3 is this first quarter. We also have a period 13, which is where we do accounting entries. And what we did in the last biennium is, we did a lot of corrections. We had some, some changes in our revenue recognition, which is accounting terminology, and we ended up making those corrections in period 13. So they're not showing up in the first three periods of last biennium. As we go along this biennium, these should become closer and closer together. You know, there's going to be some variations in, in revenues. Also, you know, this may, photo enforcement revenues are coming in a little bit higher than what in the past because we've added three camera systems. It's, it's not, this is not something to be concerned about. As, as I said, as we go along and we look at the next quarters, things will start getting closer and closer together in terms of the revenues. Overall, the funds are all performing exactly as we're expecting them to perform. Expenditures can look a little different, too. It kind of depends on when capital projects are being done. We are in the procurement process for a lot of different projects, which we'll probably start seeing some of those expenditures hitting early in the new year or in the spring time. And we have a lot of personnel costs. You know, there's, they're going up, too. So there is some, you should expect to see some increases in expenses as we, you know, as each biennium. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of this on this page. I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Or do you want to go through the whole thing and then?
Let's just go ahead and go through. Let's just go and go to the next one then. Yeah, so the challenges, we don't know yet what, how tariffs are totally going to affect us, but we do get a lot of products that we may be seeing higher costs on. We don't know a whole lot about our federal funding yet, what we're going to be getting or some of the state funding. A lot of our revenues for the state tend to be fairly similar year over year. We, you know, we get state revenues, we get cigarette taxes, we get marijuana taxes, we get liquor taxes, and some of those are increasing while others are decreasing. I believe that cigarette taxes are decreasing, which I think is a good sign for the, for the public, you know, that, that fewer people are smoking. But it's, it's a, you know, there's just some uncertainty there. And then we're still working on building our reserves. As you probably saw on the, on there that right now we're at a 6.4% for our reserves. Our, our target is 25%. That is citywide. For the general fund, we're about 7.3% for our reserves. Opportunities, our investment earnings are doing awesome compared to last biennium. But unfortunately, I think we're probably going to see those start to shift downward. We, you know, as it has been exciting to see as we get new investment proposals from our advisors that the coupon rates, the rate of return we get is so much better than what it had been. I think the shift is, is going down. I think it's a little bit slower than what it is. We had a recent one where, you know, the, it was a million dollar investment and we're getting a 3%, 3 point something percent coupon payment. And the one it was replacing, I think got a 1%. So, you know, there are, there are definitely some improvements. But I, again, I think we're going to start maybe taking that down a little bit. You know, other, other revenues in, across departments are currently going up. People are renting facilities more, parks, you know, we have that great waterfront area and people are, are interested in renting that out. And so we're very excited that we're going to be able to provide those opportunities to the public and also, you know, help us bring in some revenues for those. The first full biennium with stormwater service charges, as you, especially Counselor Smith knows, stormwater has been a very gradual increase. And I think we're finally seeing those, those revenues come in. And then also we're able to staff that a little bit higher. So we probably will be seeing some increases in expenditures in that area also. The City Manager's Office is currently going through all of our IGAs that we have and just making sure that we are recovering the rates that we need to be recovering to cover our administrative costs associated with that.
I have a question about the, the challenges, the first one.
Yeah.
So what percentage of what we buy comes from overseas that needs, that's or tariffed or?
I don't have that information.
There would be no way for us, I think, to be able to pull an exact number for that. But what I can tell you is, as we talked to all of our departments, there's not a single department that is not being impacted by this, right? Even if the item that you're buying is not directly from overseas, the component units that often go into building that product earlier in the supply chain are impacted. And so we start to see things creeping up in costs. I believe we had Public Works here just a few weeks ago to talk about filter costs, for example, and the increases there. And you also see it result in, in longer lead times. So that's a large conversation we're having with a lot of departments is how do we proactively get ahead and get earlier on ordering things, knowing that things that may have taken six months before may take a full year or longer to, to come in.
Thank you. Counselor McGee?
I don't have, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as we mentioned, we wanted to make sure that we were not only talking about, you know, what the numbers are, but also talking a little bit about what they're supporting, right? Because at the end of the day, what residents really want to know is where are their tax dollars going? Like what is this doing for the community? So as we look at this, this is just some of the highlights from period one. There's certainly significant, or excuse me, quarter one. There's certainly a significant amount of work that's not pulled up here. But there are significant reorgs that are underway across multiple departments throughout the city. One really great one, and actually goes very well with the next bullet there about new FTEs that were funded in the budget, is that rework of the Parks and Recreation Department. If you'll remember, council did fund for us to split out the Parks and Facilities Manager to provide for a greater focus on the parks needs moving forward, as well as an additional parks maintenance worker. And those are well underway and we're actually in a recruitment process right now. So very exciting. We also took the opportunity of an unfortunate departure to rework our Public Works Department and did move utility billing under the Finance Department. The expectation is that that will allow us to eliminate some duplications of work there and really provide a more streamlined experience and processing of payments. Additionally, some very exciting things that happened, deployment of laptops to city employees. This is a pretty significant win for the city. Previously during COVID, we had purchased at home computers for people to be able to work remote. So there was a computer here at the office as well as a computer at home. That switch over allowed us to move to one system, so that is a lower cost, as well as gain better, be able to provide a better service because now you can move around, be more efficient through those meetings and really getting that work done. Also very exciting, and you're going to hear from them in just a few weeks here, is the Citizen Civic Academy. That was on council strategic plan for a very long time. We were finally able to move that this fall. They've been going through classes. And like I said, they will be here in just a few weeks to present to you in regards to what they've learned and some recommendations they have. Deerfield Park improvements, very exciting, new courts there, new playground, new trails. Excuse me, updates to those. Library planning, that is one of the items that has been going through that RFP process. So it's very typical in a Q1 scenario for a city to be largely in RFP processes, given the budget was just adopted, people just got to figure out what they had to spend. But we are happy to say that they have those bids in, they're reviewing them and will be selecting a consultant shortly to do that strategic planning piece. Stormwater maintenance, we have contracts that are, are working through for that. Salem Avenue improvements, I know we got quite a few people who weren't too happy on social media about the, the roundabout, but you've seen a lot of the work that happened down there. And then also we're well underway with our monday.com implementation, moving to automated processes for everything from onboarding to capital tracking. A lot of great things in the works there. So there's a lot of moving parts that are happening this first quarter and we're very excited about what's going to be coming in the next quarter. With that, any other final questions?
Counselor Smith?
I'd like a little detail about what monday.com is. It doesn't mean, I, I have no idea.
Yeah, that was the, great question. In the budget, you guys funded a, this was based off a pilot program that we did with a automation, process automation workflow management system. And this, I apologize, I can't remember off the top of my head what the savings were on it in, in the pilot program, but that has now been rolled out to all of our departments. So where we've been doing things manually between four or five different spreadsheets or through various emails that you have to kind of go back shuffle through and try to find, we've been able to do a lot of automation on that, pull things into one place. So it's moving things through a workflow, reducing human error and allowing things to move forward more quickly and more accurately for all of our departments.
Okay.
I'm looking it up.
Thank you.
Counselor?
I was just curious about the first slide, I believe you said like not on target for reserves or on? What is our target?
Our target is 25%. We're currently 6.4% citywide. It is something that we need to work towards. It's when we were talking last time about, during the financial policy discussion, and we were talking about needing to increase our reserves based on that GFOA calculator that we were using. Our goal is to increase our reserves. However, we don't want to do it through any sort of rate increases or anything like that. We are looking for savings or one time monies that are coming in in order to help fund that.
And that's 6.25 currently, correct?
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
6.4.
6.4.
6.4.
That's citywide. So the general fund is about 7.3%.
Okay, excellent. Do you know how we stack up against other cities, like what they usually have in their reserves? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so it's going to vary from city to city. So one of the things that you have to take into account, and this is where for the first time this year, we, we actually completed that assessment of our risk for each of our funds. So GFOA actually puts together a risk calculator that looks at everything in regards to your revenues, your spending habits, your obligations, the volatility that you are seeing. And from that, you're able to kind of calculate what an expected reserve or you should be holding for your funds is. In our case, we're being pushed up a little bit higher than where they would like the target space to be, which is about 16.7%. And the reason for that is we have a heavy reliance on grants, which are a unstable funding source right now. Remember, we went through all those conversations of about the 12 million we bring in annually for that. We have a lack of diversity right now in our revenue space, which is part of why we're going through things like the IGAs, the leases, looking at a lot of community development fees. We're trying to spread and diversify that revenue picture because that will allow us to drop that 25% down over time so that we are not having to hold such high reserves. Essentially, right now, we're a little bit of a risky bet is what that's telling us. Does that help some?
Yes, but I, I would just like to know just randomly, like what Corvallis is at? Or like what Flometh or Salem?
Wouldn't know off the top of my head right now, sorry.
I guess I'll have to just read their budgets.
Counselor Thompson?
So just to follow on that, how long would you imagine getting from 7.3 in total, 6.4 in the general fund to let's say 20%? Is that, that's going to, is that going to take a long time?
Yeah, I mean, it's a several year process. It's not something that you do overnight.
No.
Certainly not. I mean, that would be catastrophic to be able to deliver services. So you tend to look at, as Gina said, those one time savings to help build that, that reserve. And at the same time, we're going to try to drive that number down. Our hope is that we never have to get to that 25% rate. We're hoping that in that time period over this next biennium and the following biennium, we can start to chip away at those factors that are pushing us up so that we can come back in line with what is a stable government funding level.
Just trying to be intentional moving forward, okay, okay.
So you think the efficiencies has been helping with that?
I think over time, we will start to see some of that. The bigger thing that efficiencies are going to be doing is really, you're always going to see that expenditure line go up, right? Cost of services is not getting lower. You see that inflation every year. It's very rare that it actually dips out. If you look long-term over the last 50 years, you'll see that it grows at about 2.4% every year, no matter what. You have those fluctuations, but the average is 2.4. What efficiencies will allow us to do is keep the line from moving like this very sharply and bring the line back down to this, which allows for things to be done more, sorry. It allows for taxpayer dollars to go further and for us to not have to come back and ask for things more, more regularly. If you remember back to that budget discussion we did earlier in the year, that was a big piece of why we wanted to do a lot of those efficiency projects, was to take that line down and not place such a burden on our residents long-term.
So how's the strategic budget planning going? Is it, where are we at?
Yeah, so I mean, it's an ongoing process. So this is one of the key items that we talked about as part of that is that starting to link that conversation of what dollars are doing and, and what, what tax dollars are achieving for the community. So this is one piece of that. Obviously, you guys are, are going through the strategic planning process as well, which is going to give us that roadmap for the, for the next period. But it's an ongoing conversation. We've got Jen, our budget manager, who's working on long-term models. We've been meeting with departments around projections and helping them better understand where things are going. So it's this really great shift to long-term conversations and not just talking about how things are impacting today, but how they're going to impact two, three, four, five years down the line so we can make those smart recommendations to you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith had something?
Thank you. How, the, the lack of diversity in revenues, how much of that is connected to the Oregon's tax structure?
So I'm not going to lie, the Oregon tax structure is a challenge. Having worked in four different states, I can tell you in every single state, you go in for the first time and they tell you, oh man, we have the worst tax situation in the entire country. I can tell you, Oregon is the worst that I have been in out of all of them. That being said, there's a lot that we could be doing to help diversify. And I think a, a huge piece of this has been a capacity issue, not having the expertise and time on staff to be able to really pursue some of these things. So it's not just about adding different sources, it's also about changing the levels that those sources play in, right? And so community development fees, for example, have been kept very low for a long time, right? City of Albany for a long time was in a space where we wanted to invite development in and we felt that we needed to remain super low in order to pull those in. That has now gone off balance where we're not pulling in, you know, coverage for a lot of those, those services. And we are actually well below many of our neighbors when we're actually a desirable place to do business and, and come develop in. So rebalancing that is going to help shift that level in, in, in terms of how much comes as a percentage from property tax versus that. Same thing with leases, IGAs, we've kept those artificially low for a very long time. It's a lengthy process to go through each of those, but it's something that both the Finance Team, City Manager's Office are working on right now. So we can hopefully continue this trend of stabilizing.
Thank you.
How many IGAs do we have right now?
Oh my gosh.
100, 200?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's actually something I can pull pretty quickly for you. So we've actually been going through over the last several months, just a discovery process on the number of IGAs. IGAs have lived in a multitude of places throughout the organization and sometimes they creep up on us unexpectedly. So one of the actual process improvements that's going through monday.com right now is a consolidation of location for all of our IGAs, along with automation of renewal reminders. So that instead of just renewing last minute and going with what we've found before, we can do the due diligence, take the time, make sure that we are recouping the correct cost ratio and really update those to reflect where the city is at today.
And giving us an opportunity as a council to know ahead of time what's coming.
Yeah, because some of those discussions will be difficult, right? If we've been subsidizing or are charging less for services for a very long time for other communities, that's a difficult conversation, right? They can't just pull that money out overnight. And so that's something that we want to get in front of council very early. Also get in front of their boards very early so that they can plan and prepare for that.
Thank you. Counselor, anything else?
Counselor Smith, may I answer your diversity question? In the general fund, it is a big problem. This city has a central services fee which helps out, but I can tell you that probably eight or 10 cities have emailed asking about how you implement something like that because they're not in the same kind of shape. So helping, it certainly helps our general fund. The changes that Kayla was talking about, we'll, we'll be looking at, but they're kind of nibbling on the edges. There is, because of our reliance upon property tax, there is a systemic imbalance, which we haven't addressed.
Counselor McGee, do you have anything?
No, not.
You know, the counselors? Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate the hard work on this. You know, it's, it's great looking at efficiencies getting better and better and better. And so I appreciate the work you guys, the team has put into this work.
Thank you.
Items five on your agenda, public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take the comments under advisement and requests and comments under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get up to the microphone, please give your name, state your whether or not you live in the city of Albany, and no public comment was, no public written public comment was received. Cameron Sotomayor?
My name is Cameron Sotomayor. I am an Albany resident. I want to talk about an experience I had earlier this week. I have a friend, he's not doing very well financially. He's, he's struggling. SNAP benefits have not been renewed, they may or may not be renewed. He didn't really have any money to buy food. So on Monday, I went to Winco and I got a couple bags of groceries for him. Brought it to him so he could continue to eat. He's like, I can't live in Albany, it's too expensive. He, he lives in Jefferson now because it's a little bit cheaper there. Still a struggle, but it'd be even more so in Albany. And there's a lot of people like him in Albany right now that are struggling. SNAP benefits have gone away, they maybe will come back, they maybe won't. Inflation keeps chugging in along. A lot of wages are stagnant, there's job insecurity. There's just people that are living on the edge. And something like a city service fee, a water fee, that can be a big deal to them. That, that can be the difference between how That can be the difference between having a mill or not having a mill. And we need to make sure that we have a tax structure. And by tax structure, I'm talking city service fees, property taxes, all the income Albany gets. We need to have a tax structure that's fair, that's equitable. And when you have a state like this where people are struggling and then you're talking about tax exemptions for the downtown area to build luxury apartments, is that really going to be fair? It's like, yeah, they don't pay taxes for seven or 10 years and then after that, they'll pay taxes. So there'll be all this income coming in. But you got to remember that there's also costs to the city. People that move in to the area to live in these luxury apartments or condos are going to be using city services that require more resources, be it the fire department, water services, transportation, police department, you name it. There's expenses. So it's not like you get all this free revenue that comes in from that, because you've got more expenses with it. And then you've got seven to 10 years where the rest of the city, low-income, middle-income, are basically paying the tax burden for that. And that's not just... Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, item six, ordinances. Multi-unit property tax exemption, MPT, second reading. Sean.
An ordinance amending the Albany municipal code AMC Title III by creating Chapter 3.10 and enacting a multi-unit property tax exemption, MPT, program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'd like to have discussion before a motion. Is that possible?
It's after the...
Is that allowed?
Yes.
Okay. So I... At our last meeting, I shared my concerns about the MPT ordinance, and I want to revisit those concerns with a renewed focus today. I continue to support the overall goal of this program, leveraging tax incentives to generate public value. But I remain concerned that the current proposal doesn't go far enough to ensure that the community truly benefits from what we are giving up in tax revenue. The current structure sets the bar too low. It's allowing a seven- or 10-year tax exemption in exchange for just two or three public benefit items. And if we're going to offer a tax... A decade of tax relief, we should be asking for a more substantial return. I think the in lieu of fee should be set at a level that truly offsets the taxes that were foregoing. This is our opportunity to lead the way in changing that 10% industry standard. I continue to support increasing that rate to 20% of the total tax exemption. And we can't ignore the broader context here. We're asking residents to pay more for basic services, like the increase in trash collection fees that we just heard about tonight, while simultaneously considering tax breaks for private development. That disconnect is hard to justify. Our residents are watching, and they expect us to prioritize their needs. This is our chance to lead, to set a precedent that says public resources must deliver public value. Let's make sure that this program reflects that principle. I would like to hear from the other counselors. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Counselor McLeod for putting a pause on this at the last meeting. It gave me time to do some research in the intervening time. Three of us were not here, not on the council, when the OB company came and did their presentation. And let's be clear, while this tool could be used by other individuals, I think, at least in the paper, OB was very clear that they needed, they expected, this tax break to do their proposal they kind of sketched out. And, you know, I want to echo the counselor and the person who talked from the public. There's a disconnect between our hand wringing over an increase to the city service fee. And we should talk about it a lot, but we're just not at the time to be giving these kind of tax breaks to an outfit that certainly looks like they're doing well by my... From the outside, they go to other cities. They're doing a big project in Corvallis. And it starts with, "We'd love to do this project, but we first need these tax breaks." And I don't think... You know, I've been here for the whole project of Cara, which was sold as a way, and it's been successful. In fact, OB referred to the work done in Cara as a reason why Albany is a place to invest. But Cara was a tax break for a period of time to create incentives, to create the city to be able to do things that we would never be able to do under our regular budget appropriations, and it's worked well. But following that, we should be in the time... We're coming up on a time where we need to be now working to pay back the indebtedness of Cara and eventually get to the time where those tax abatements are waived, not spend years on Cara with tax abatements and then create a limited and more direct tax abatement. I think that's the wrong way to go. So specifically, I would like to propose an amendment to the ordinance that excludes the historic Central Business District from the area outlined in the map. That area has been the focus of the Cara investments for 20 years now. And I think it's time to... If projects are done in that area, they need to receive full tax benefits to our community.
So do I?
So I'm proposing that amendment.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to amend, I believe, specifically following the phrase "in designated areas close to transit", I would put comma, excluding the historic district. Well, excluding the central business, the historic Central Business District.
Well, we called the question.
Can I... Is that Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to ask Matthew Rutgers and Sophie if they would like to come up. But I think there's some misunderstandings here. There is no lost tax revenue. This revenue wouldn't be realized unless the development happens. So the reason a tax exemption is needed is because the system currently disincentivizes this kind of construction. So without this, it wouldn't happen. You know, it's not giving up taxes at all. It's actually creating more of a tax base. It's holding your breath and waiting for 10 years. Yes, there's a little bit of time involved. But if you didn't have that, you'd be waiting for a long, long... Much longer time than that. And the development wouldn't be there. So the residents are actually better served by this type of development that the MPT incentivizes. And as far as changing the terms, it's important to remember that certainly the terms can fluctuate, or not fluctuate, but can be varied. But the more... The purpose of this is to incentivize construction. So the less of an incentive there is, the less likely you'll have any of that development.
And another thing is that they're going to create jobs, which puts food on tables, and they're good jobs. I've talked... Matter of fact, one of my family members is one of the managers of the hotel... The manager of the hotel down in Eugene. And we talk, and those are high-paying jobs. People love working for that company. And to disincentivize them would be a loss for this city for generations, because they're going to create hundreds of jobs over time. And it makes sense for us to be proactive and plan for that eighth grader that's going to go off to college and bring that family back here to live in Albany because of the great things that are here in Albany. Hey, Counselor Smith?
Could I... I was just going to clarify one thing that was said. Mr. Sotomayor was speaking about. And I think probably Sophie, Matthew will say this. When it comes to, like, we're talking about what the services that this development or whatever will be using, they're not waiving SDC fees or connection fees or any of those things. They're paying full boat for water, sewer...
Stormwater.
Whatever, stormwater.
Traffic.
Road SDCs. They're paying full for all of it. This is property taxes only. And those property taxes don't all go to Albany. A lot of that is Lynn County or Lynn-Bitten Community College. And that's why we needed them to sign off on this project before. Because otherwise, if they didn't, you know, they could say, "No, we're not going to forego those ties." And it's only the property taxes, not anything to do with utilities. So if somebody comes in and develops, they're not getting free utilities or we're not waiving any of their fees, connection fees, SDCs, any of that stuff. So I don't know if that helps clear anything up or not, but...
Counselor Smith?
It adds to what I was going to ask about. Clarify for me that the taxes that would be delayed are only on a portion of the development, the infrastructure underneath it, the hotel, the whatever goes into a development that gets a MPT exemption. Sorry for the repeating exemption there. But they would be that... Those would be additional property taxes that we would receive that we are not receiving now on whatever piece of ground is going to be built upon, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The underlying land and any value that is already on the property will continue to be taxed and will continue... You know, as those values increase, we'll continue to receive the increased value as well on anything that is existing. It's only the qualified new improvement that is exempted.
And the qualified new improvement, that is the residential portion of the improvement.
That's correct. Unless there is a non-residential component that is beating one of the public benefit requirements, in that case, it is also included.
If I can just add on to that, one of the other key pieces of this program that I want to ensure is not lost is there is a very high bar to be able to qualify for MPT. There is this independent financial analysis that is done that essentially, to put it in layman's terms, they have to demonstrate that without the MPT tool, the project cannot happen. And so we talked in the last meeting about how much we anticipate this being used. One or two projects a year, if we're lucky. It's not a, you know, 20 projects come in and make use of the MPT tool. That's not going to happen. It is a... The financial analysis is something that they have to pay for. And it's done by a third party. And will demonstrate, or has to demonstrate, the project cannot financially work without the MPT tool.
What portion of the proposed MPT area is in the central business district that Counselor Thompson wants to exempt?
The majority, if not all. I don't...
I'd have to look.
That's what I was thinking.
There'd be almost nothing left.
I have another follow-up question.
Well, I see Counsel Ron Jemlin has it first.
Yeah, so first procedural question. Just to make sure that I understand here. So we're actually looking at two different things here. So first, much like when we established, what was it, CET? There's an ordinance, and then there's a resolution to establish the MPT program guidelines, both of which we need to vote on tonight. Okay? So the first question that's going to be before us is, do we want to establish a MPT at all, correct?
Right.
And that's the ordinance. And then...
He proposed a change.
Yeah, the proposed changes would be within the MPT guidelines, yes?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we would... You could establish it tonight. Although the way it's written now, the MPT that we're voting on tonight, there is a boundary district already established. Yeah, in the ordinance, right.
Yeah, so because we have to define the area that we want to have MPT in in order to say, "We're going to have a MPT." That makes sense. Okay. So I think that what Counselor McLeod had to say about the public benefits, particularly the in lieu of fee, I think that if our goal is to incentivize the developers choosing the... Yeah, we're going to provide the public benefits, that what you say makes sense, potentially pegging the in lieu of fee higher so that that's a less attractive option. Is that kind of what you're going for with that suggestion?
Yes, what I would like to do is increase the in lieu of fee to 20% and also require a minimum of four public benefit items for a seven-year tax exemption and six public benefit items for a 10-year tax exemption.
May I just make one clarifying? Just based on what you said, Counselor. The in lieu of fee is in relation to the affordable housing component. It does not cancel out the need to meet the public benefits requirements as well.
Okay, so they can pay the in lieu of fee instead of provide the affordable housing component, but they still have to provide the public benefits.
That's correct.
Thank you. I misunderstood that. Thank you. Okay. That changes my thought on that a little bit.
Can I get... What was that again? It was... No, 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 no. What your motion was?
He made the motion.
Counselor Thompson made a motion.
Yeah, I have a motion still on...
And we're discussing it now.
No, we're not discussing any motion.
We've got staff jumping in. It's kind of a free-for-all.
Yeah.
Yes. Counselor Thompson made a motion. There was no second yet, because we haven't called for it yet.
What were all the items in your motion again?
Simply within the ordinance. And I'm sorry to jump ahead to the ordinance, but just proposing that comma excluding the historic Central Business District within the ordinance. So excluding that area within the MPT map.
And then Counselor McLeod also had suggestions that Counselor Van Jermolen elucidated on.
But neither one of them made a motion.
Well, I can do that now, then. I move to adopt the proposed...
We already have one before us we have to deal with first.
We don't have a motion before us, because it hasn't been seconded.
I move to adopt the proposed MPT ordinance with the following amendments. One, public benefit thresholds. Require a minimum of four public benefit items for a seven-year tax exemption and six public benefit items for a 10-year tax exemption. Two, in-loop payment structure. Set the in-loop payment option at 20% of the total forgone property taxes over the exemption period.
I have a motion.
You want me to restate?
What are you doing?
I will second her motion, if that's...
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
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 We have...
Three to three.
Three to three. And I'm going to say no as well.
Mr. Mayor, let me point out also that 20% of... If you raise it to 20%, 20% of zero is still zero. So that it's highly likely that if you raise it too high... And I know you've already turned down the amended motion. But it's important to remember, we're trying to incentivize people to do something.
Was there another motion?
Well...
Is there more discussion?
Want me to restate my motion again?
Yeah.
My motion was to amend the ordinance, putting in the phrase "excluding the historic Central Business District". And I can't remember where. Excluding the historic Central Business District within the map, the MPT map.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor would say aye.
I would like to discuss that before we vote. Can we?
I thought we just... I'm sorry. I thought we just discussed that.
No, we just discussed Counselor...
No, I understand that. But I thought that he did a really good job of outlining what he said. And then it was discussed particularly about that particular part of the amendment of the downtown district piece that Sophie cleared. I'm not under... I'm not under, what is the delay? What more does...
I would like to discuss the current motion on the floor before we vote on it.
I'll rescind my second so we can do that.
No, you don't need to rescind your second. It is proper to have discussion before we vote on the motion on the table.
We're in right order. Go ahead.
Thank you. So with the, let me just find my notes on this. With the public benefit that Counselor Thompson is commenting on, it's the development or redevelopment of underutilized, blighted, or historically significant property. And it does say a project is, I'm sorry. No. Pardon me. There is something in here about historic properties, and I'm trying to find that, historically significant property, excuse me. It says that a severely blighted building or property or preserving a historic property or component. So there already is language in this ordinance to preserve historic property. And is it my understanding, Counselor Thompson, that you're wanting to remove the historic property component?
It's not so much, I use the term historical Central Business District. I think that's the correct definition of the downtown area. I'm trying to remove the idea of a modern five-story building being put into our historic downtown. And at a time when that area needs to be thinking about the taxes from that area, needs to start paying off the carer debt.
So what? Obey properties built to fit the character of where they go. Have you ever seen one of our properties?
Yeah, I'm somewhat familiar with the Eugene District Market.
So we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, sir, are we passing an ordinance for a specific developer? I thought we weren't supposed to do that.
We're trying to incentivize the people to develop. And one of them is interestingly presented to the city council. You weren't on the council at the time. That's it.
I'm sorry, your comments just made it sound like we were passing a ordinance for a specific developer.
No, we're not. We're not passing for a specific developer. One person expressed interest in it. And there will be others. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, as a point of parliamentary order, I'd like to ask that the motion be restated before we vote.
Okay.
Once again, the motion is to propose amendment within the ordinance that excludes the historic Central District.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No. No.
Camera roll call, please.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor McGee?
No.
Counselor Newton?
Yeah.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Van Dremelin?
No.
Counselor McLeod?
No.
What's the motion?
Looks like the motion fails.
It's a tie.
It's a tie?
Yeah, it's a tie.
No, it's not a tie.
I only heard two.
It's four to two.
I'm sorry, I miscounted.
Four to two.
Who did I miss?
Let's do a roll call, please. We already did that.
We just did.
Just did.
Can we restate the vote for Maryland's personal edification?
Michael and I were yes, everyone else is no.
Thank you.
Those motion fails. Okay, so before you have an ordinance, should I have you read it a second time and title only? Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution establishing...
The ordinance.
Sorry, yes, thank you. I moved to, I do not move to accept the resolution. I moved to adopt the ordinance on page 32 of the packet establishing a MPT.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Nope.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Van Dremelin? Counselor McLeod?
No.
Looks like we have a tie.
And so with that, I'll say yes. Motion passes. Back to the agenda.
So now we need to talk about the resolution, though.
Yes. And the resolution, wait, there's no resolution on here.
There is somewhere.
It's in the packet.
There it is.
Find a page number and I'll make the resolution.
Page 34.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, it's not on my sheet.
Oh, it's not on the summary.
Yeah. We have a motion, refund the resolution real quick. Give me a second.
Yeah, because my motion was just to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah. Ordinance there, I'm looking for a resolution. One page away. We have a resolution on page 33.
I'll move to adopt the resolution on page 33, establishing guidelines for the multi-unit property tax exemption program.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
No.
No. Sorry, I got myself mixed up. I'm a no.
Okay.
Sorry.
So three to three?
I believe that's a tie.
I'm going to vote yes. Thank you, counsel. Next, resolutions, removal of...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There's, in that resolution piece, there's also an action that we need for the council to authorize staff to enter into an IGA with Lynn County.
That's not even on my notes either.
It's listed in the packet in the memo under staff recommendation.
Take a look. Read this three days ago.
I believe that's page 42 of the packet.
Thank you. Up since 5:00 AM. There it goes, intergovernmental agreement. Well, counsel, have you read the intergovernmental agreement? Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize staff to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
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 Roll call, please.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
I'll vote yes on this since we're already in deep.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Van Dremelin? Counselor McLeod?
No.
Motion passes, four to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, staff. Next is the resolution, removal of deposits for water accounts. Gina, Director Jaeger, pages 45 through 54 in your packet.
Hello again. As Kayla mentioned earlier, utility billing has come under the Finance Department effective October 1st. And one of the first things I did is sat down with the customer service supervisor, Patty McInnis, and she told me that she thinks it would be a really great idea to remove the $100 deposit for new water accounts for renters. So we took a look at that. And honestly, it takes a lot more time and administrative costs to administer this program. And so we think it'd be a fantastic idea to no longer have that deposit necessary. I think it supports our strategic plan. It gives us great neighborhoods. It eliminates some of those barriers to residents, to low-income renters, and just to renters who are newer, who are maybe establishing their first residences. It also, it supports the effect of government. It really is more administrative, the way that we currently have to track checks. So I don't know if anybody is aware of this. The state has a program called unclaimed property. So one of the things that we have to do as a city is we have to track any checks that go uncashed. So a lot of times when these deposits are being paid, it is multiple people who are on these accounts. So when we are refunding this $100 deposit, it may be going to four people. And those checks tend not to be cashed. And so then we have to track it for the required amount of time and then do our due diligence, sending out letters to them, and then also then we have to report it to the state. This is going to eliminate that, which I think is going to be a net benefit for the city. So I think as far as cost goes, it's going to be a wash. I think there may be some advantage in having lower administrative costs, but we just think this is a really fantastic idea, especially right now, to eliminate those. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a comment.
We have, Counselor.
As a renter, I totally agree with this. I'm really excited that this is happening, so I'm on board with it for sure.
Any other counselors?
I agree, it makes sense.
Great work.
Great. Counsel, you guys feel the same way?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution eliminating deposits for new water accounts for renters.
Second.
Aye.
Just specifically for apartments, right, or just everybody?
So currently, property owners do not pay the deposit. It was only for renters.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is business from the council. I'll start with Counselor McGee first.
I had an opportunity last week to meet with the Civic Academy participants on their last day. I was really happy to see them and talk with them and offer some words of wisdom. And I'm really excited that they are coming to council to present. And then I also was able to attend the Human Relations Commission meeting and hear all the great work that they're doing specifically around creating a youth advisory council, which is something I've been wanting to have since getting on council. So this is really exciting to hear that that's happening. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I thought you would be on Zoom, that's why I had you second.
I always love going second, so thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to touch base about the age diversion ordinance that we requested and see if staff had an update on that. For traffic school, removing the age limit of 25 years of age and allowing anyone with their first traffic light ticket to...
My understanding is it's...
Great timing.
There you go. My understanding is the program has been implemented. They started it on October 1st. So it's been in place about a month. I'm not sure. I haven't communicated or haven't talked to the judge about how that works or how they've been doing on it. But maybe Gina can find out from the, make a report next time.
How are we letting folks know about this? Do we know many people have taken advantage of it? And also, we requested an ordinance. Can we get one?
Okay, and I can say that on the ordinance part of it, I think we have an ordinance drafted up, and I think staff has it now. I drafted one, but I think staff has got it now, and they're reviewing it, so yeah.
Okay, appreciate you guys taking initiative and implementing it early, but yeah.
Yeah, we are currently reviewing the ordinance, and we plan to bring it back in January for council to review. In the meantime, we have implemented a diversion program for all ages starting in October 1st. People, as people are registering, when they come into court for their photo enforcement, we are handing out that information to them so they can review it and determine whether or not they want to apply for the program. Okay?
Counsel Van Dremelin, you had something?
Oh, I was, I had thought that a clarification might have been needed. That doesn't sound like it's actually needed, so I'm good.
All right, thank you. That it, Counselor?
That's it.
Counsel McLeod, working back this way.
Thank you. I have four items tonight. I wanted to take a moment first to talk about Kinder Park, since I've heard repeated concerns from one of our residents about safety in that area. I followed up with the Albany Police Department to get a clearer picture. Over the past two years, there were 190 calls for service to Kinder Park from the public. Most of those came from a single individual. And officers also made 467 visits on their own. That means there's been a police presence in the park about once every 26 and a half hours. And when you include the nearby bike path areas behind Lowe's, along Oak Street, and the path to Queen Avenue, that frequency increases to about once every 21 hours. So officers are out there regularly keeping an eye on things. Even though most of the calls came from one person, it still shows that people are paying attention and reaching out when they see something that concerns them. And this kind of engagement helps the city and the Albany Police Department respond more effectively. So I also want to take a moment to sincerely thank the APD for the consistent service that they provide to our community. This regular presence and responsiveness make a real difference in helping keep our parks safe and welcoming for everyone. Second, I have a constituent who contacted me with concerns about fluoride in our city's drinking water and asked whether the city might consider ending the practice. I acknowledged their concerns and explained that our current approach aligns with public health guidelines. I also shared that there were a few options available to residents who want to pursue a change, such as bringing the issue to council, initiating a petition, or encouraging council to refer the matter to voters. And I want to thank the City Manager's Office for your assistance in helping me provide accurate and helpful information to that resident. So thank you for that. Third, I had a constituent reach out about an ADU project and a nearby drainage ditch. They were initially told that no permit was needed to fill the ditch, but later informed that an engineering plan and permit were required. This caused confusion and delays, especially since similar work in the neighborhood didn't appear to go through permitting. I have spoken with the city engineering manager, who is directly handling that issue. And lastly, I'd like to take a moment to address the recent changes to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, as we heard earlier from Mr. Settlemeyer. The federal government has moved to reduce or in some cases eliminate SNAP benefits nationwide this month. The impact on our community has been immediate and deeply felt. But what has truly stood out to me over the past two weeks is the extraordinary response from our residents. I've witnessed an outpouring of compassion and solidarity that has been nothing short of inspiring. Emergency food pantries have been set up in every one of our elementary schools. Neighbors are leaving shelf-stable food on their porches for anyone in need. I've heard stories of people preparing an extra plate of food for a stranger simply because they could. Local businesses are stepping up too, organizing food drives and collecting donations for our food banks. And this is what community looks like. In the face of hardship, our residents are showing up for one another in powerful, tangible ways. It's a reminder that even in difficult times, we can find strength in each other. And it's moments like these that truly put the unity in community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
Counselor McLeod kind of stole my thunder there. I was going to talk specifically, and she's right. The community outpouring has been significant with the cutoff of SNAP funding. But two organizations and two individuals in Ward 1 really stepped up. Strong Albany Schools, led by Jennifer Willis, and the Albany Student Advocacy Project, led by Jill Nelson, came together and put food pantries in all the schools, starting with the Title I schools, but now they've, I think, have reached every school. Teachers know which kids might be missing a meal, and it gives them an easy chance to direct them to that help. And those two Ward 1 residents really went above and beyond, and they couldn't have done it without tons of help. So just thanks to everybody who's helped out.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counsel McGee, Counsel Van Dremelin?
I'd like to echo the sentiments about community outpouring of support during the SNAP. I'm not even sure what to call it at this point. Involuntary hiatus, I don't know. But all of the organizations that are doing good work, let's make sure that we support them, whether that's financially or in kind. I'd also like to encourage all members of the community to attend the annual Albany Veterans Day Parade next week, and not just because my kiddo will be marching with the Memorial Middle School Band. Always my favorite parts of the parade are the marching bands. So please show your support of those who have served, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Smith.
Three things. The Heart Organization Homeless Engagement and Resource Team continues to meet monthly, as we have done since fall of 2007. We are planning the annual Memorial Day event for Friday, December 19th, at 5:30 PM at Second Chance Shelter. Typically, it happens on the shortest or the longest night of the year, but that is on a... We, typically it happens on the shortest or the longest night of the year, but that is on a Sunday this time. So we're doing it on Friday, which will be long and cold enough. And related to that, the Community Services Consortium is working on plans for the point-in-time count. The official day will be January twenty-eighth of twenty-six. Counting will take place at a variety of sites throughout Lynn County from January twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth through February sixth. And they are, this will come as good news for people who want data in a handy spot. They are putting together a webpage on the CSC site that is devoted to the PIT count. Numbers from the count will be posted there, and they will remain there year-round. And there will be a spot for making donations. They're trying, they're collecting cash donations to provide ten-dollar gift cards to people to encourage their participation. And aiming for, they have a two-thousand-dollar goal. There will be, there's a QR code. There will be a way to donate. Or you can contact me and I'll see that it gets to the right place.
What was the date for that?
January twenty-eighth.
I apologize, the other one with heart.
December nineteenth, Friday, December nineteenth.
That was the, like, in memoriam, people that have passed away?
For people who've died from...
While being homeless.
Causes related to homelessness. As of today, I, the statistics from Albany PD for Albany alone, there has only been one. And, yes. There have been in other communities, and we have people collecting data throughout Lynn County. So all of those will be remembered. And the, to end on a slightly different note, the mayor had a scheduling conflict yesterday and asked me to step in and speak to a Boy Scare, a Cub Scout troop at First Methodist Church last night. It's a group, this is an interesting mix. They, the ages run from kindergarten through age twelve. Matt came with me, thank goodness. Matt is an Eagle Scout, for those of you who don't know everything about him. And he, and also he speaks child much better than I do. So they wanted, they were studying citizenship. And they wanted to meet an elected official. That's required for their completion of that unit of study. They wanted to find out how people vote for councilors. And they wanted to know what I, what we do. So I talked about making decisions and weird things that come before us and routine things that come before us and how many meetings we have. And they, they sat in rapt attention for a good twenty minutes. It didn't hurt that, and actually it really enhanced it, that Matt brought really cool stuff for the kids. And ice scrapers for their parents to be prepared for bad weather. It's the whole, he had a whole be prepared scout theme going on. Pencils, city pencils. Did you know that he, now he didn't tell the kids this, but he told me that you can use a sharpened pencil to kill a rodent, to eat it in an emergency. Or you can rub the pencils together to start a fire. So see how clever, the things you learn in the Scouts. He brought magnets for the refrigerator to encourage people to develop a home emergency plan. He brought information about the If I Were Mayor program and had two potential participants in different age groups. Let's see, what else was there? The City Coloring Book, the Fall Edition. A crossword puzzle based on all Albany. And you can ask your parents to help you. You can find all the answers on our website. Very cool stuff that, that our crack communications team has handy for people of all ages. So I wanted to publicly thank Matt for being there. It was a nasty night. Weather was terrible. But the hospitality was great, and the kids, they really paid attention. And they do a great pledge of allegiance. So we encourage them to contact the mayor and maybe come and do the pledge here. Because they would not be the first, but they would certainly make a good impression. They were good kids.
Thank you. And I echo Counsel McLeod and Counsel Thompson, everyone else's thoughts on the community. I care about the children, but my population is seniors. And several of my seniors have been connecting with each other to figure out how to help them get food. And so take and pick up their food, buying food for them. And so that compassion is not only just our children, but also throughout the whole community. So thank you for your kind words, your strong words. I have the recycling thing on my refrigerator at work and also at the, on my house, at my house. So that's a great flyer to have out there. So we need to get those in the hands of kids and get those in the hands of the community. I attended a long-range facilities advisory committee for the school system for GAPS. There's a lot of hard work that's starting, and we're gonna be going through a year process of looking at planning school systems, changes, improvements in the next year, over the next year or so. And I was joined, Matthew Ruck was also participating in that, and it was a lot of great information last night. And that's why I could not attend, and thank you for participating for me. I appreciate that.
It was a treat. Thanks.
I had a meeting with the Farm Workers Housing Development Corporation. And Meg just comes in my office and just has a seat, so we just talk. But they broke ground out there on the project, and so that's starting now. I'm pretty excited about that. So some affordable housing, low-income housing out there. And then the, we broke, we broke ground on the twentieth of September, but we signed the final documents to start building the Veterans Housing Development over on Price Road. So that was a really big deal for us. And then I was invited to Brownsville to talk about the City of Albany. And I said, are you sure you're gonna give me twenty minutes? At fifteen, the guy goes, you're running a little long, partner. So I kind of shut it down, but it was nice to be welcomed out there. And I met most of those folks when I refereed their kids' football games or softball games. So City Brownsville, I really appreciate them inviting me out. And my friend Lonnie Carus is the one inviting me to come to speak with them, and I'll let them know you had a great time. And thank you, Matthew, for all that you do as well. With that, I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the struggles that have been referenced this evening about the reduced or eliminated SNAP benefits, I thought it might be a good time to point out our low-income assistance program and how that's available for folks if they need it. And along those lines, I'd like to call out Sean Park and the IT Department. They've started an effort to help people who are struggling that way. And there are bins available here in City Hall, down at Station Eleven, in the main library, at the Albany Police Department, and then out at Public Works Ops in Building A. And in those bins, you can put non-perishable foodstuffs for distribution. I wanted to just make a note of thanks to Jen Ambule and Gina Jaeger and Kayla for putting together that first quarterly financial report. That's something that, the quarterly, the word quarterly implies that you'll receive it every three months. And it'll, it'll really help you and our citizens keep abreast of our financial health. The, thank you to Counsel McLeod for bringing up the Kinder and Periwinkle issues. You all have received the statistics that she noted. We can certainly answer any more questions if they come up. And then I wanted to give you a little bit of an update, that you'll remember that at the beginning part of this year, council directed staff to create an economic development grant program. So by way of a short update, in January, council discussed a grants program for businesses and specifically confirmed that the, that the council wants a citywide small business program. In a February ten update, our deputy city manager advised that we're evaluating an economic development grant program using economic development funds, looking at trade-offs and priorities. The council at that point was concerned that spending would be added to the draft 2025-2027 biennium budget. And the intent was for the funds to be included in that draft budget for consideration. At a work session in April, Sophie discussed preliminary staff research into starting an economic development grant program, as well as research from other cities in Oregon who have started similar programs. She noted that those cities recommend identifying what the community needs are by working with banks and small business development centers. They might include workforce training or childcare assistance for employees. But these requirements would vary, could and would vary depending on community need. We noted then that department staffing is limited with a full workload in many projects. And it was the council's consensus to put a placeholder in the budget for developing a possible grant program in the upcoming biennium, the one that we're in right now. Sophie also explained how the Economic Development Advisory Committee Commission could be enlisted to help with the establishment of economic development grant criteria. And council directed that the program should be citywide, once again, for local businesses of less than fifty employees and aimed at bolstering existing businesses and helping them grow. Unfortunately, the ADAC meeting of last week had to be canceled due to the lack of a quorum. We've rescheduled that, and Sophie will bring a draft program back for council consideration after we get their input on that. And that's the update. And if you have any questions, of course, we're happy to answer them. The last thing I would point out, Mayor, is that the next meeting, November seventeenth, work session...
Starts at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
So the next meeting, we're anticipating on November seventeenth, a large turnout. So the meeting, the work session will be at 6:00 PM. And Wednesday, November nineteenth, will be a meeting at 6:00 PM our regular time. And Monday, December eighth, we'll be meeting with, a joint meeting at 4:00 PM with GAPS for a special meeting with the GAPS School Board. With that, I'll join the meeting. No, I thought I mentioned that when I first started. I guess I didn't.
Maybe I wasn't on yet.
It was removed.
Like, okay.
Thank you, Counsel McLeod. Oh, thank you, Counsel McGee. Sorry.